Thank you all for being here. If you'd please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. Had a busy few days here in Douglas County and we're trying to continue with business as we can, but it's certainly not business as usual. So the first thing we're going to do on Sunday morning at ten fifteen, as the board chair went ahead and declared a county state of an emergency. We, that allows us to do several things, including frees up the public works director and his team to hire contractors to help him with the issues that are going on and helps build capacity amongst other things. Monday, when the three board members were here, we had an emergency meeting and went ahead and codified that in an emergency meeting. And in a public meeting today, I'd like to also make a motion to reapprove or continue to approve this emergency. So it's a fairly long board order. I'm not going to read all of it, but the important parts is that we declared the existence of a state of emergency. And we did that at, on three sixteen at ten fifty AM. So I'd make a motion to do that. Motion second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. So again, before we start the agenda, I want to thank everybody that's been responding. Some of those people are in the room here and there's also people all over this county still out dealing with all the problems we have. We have a tremendous amount of recovery and work ahead of us and rebuilding. So commissioners, our emergency management team, sheriff, the public works department, and literally everybody else that we called and asked for help showed up and continue to put effort into this. So moving through the agenda, the next agenda item is our consent agenda. We have everything from contract extensions to many reappointments. So I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion a second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda item number two is citizens, questions, comments on agendas. I will note for everybody here that we have two public hearings today, number four and number seven. So if you're here to comment on those agenda items, the appropriate time would be during those agenda items. And I'll also note that we have, after this meeting, we're going to reconvene as the four H master gardener extension service district. So if you're here for those items, it would be appropriate to wait until that time. So with that being said, do anybody online?
Do you want to say anything though? They're muted right now.
See if they have an agenda item they'd like to speak on other than the public hearings. Unmute them, let me talk. Can you hear me? Mr. Davis, if you have an agenda item you'd like to speak to, this would be the appropriate time. If you'd unmute yourself and speak, please. All right. Very good. Thank you for being with us. Anybody here in the room that would like to come forward on agenda items other than four and seven, please do so. Seeing none, we'll move to the agenda items. Agenda item number three is a clerk's office item and I'll invite up Douglas County clerk, Dan Limbus.
Good morning, commissioners. Dan Limbus, Douglas County Clerk's Office. This is a contract modification. It's our first modification to contract three zero 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 eight six six between Douglas County and Helion Software. They provide our recording suite, marriage licensing, property value appeals, such things as that. Great provider. Their costs have gone up. We've got a slight modification to the contract.
Dirt removal?
Can I do that? A motion a second. Questions or comments? I'm not going to do this for everyone, but I want to do it for the first one. I do want to point out, even though we have all this emergency stuff going on, world continues to turn and you're getting ready for a big election and your team's downstairs doing that. So all the regular work the county does continues while we're doing this response. So thank you for the work you and your team are doing. Any more comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you, Dan. Agenda item number four is going to be a public hearing. So we'll start with a staff report from county council. Good morning.
Morning. Tiffany Podlesnik, county council. The, this is kind of a two-part item, but the first portion of it is a public hearing regarding the removal of the parks use designation from small portions of tax account numbers R five one eight one nine, R five one eight two six, R five one six three seven, R five one eight eight nine, R five one eight three three, and R five one eight nine six. The intent of this is that the parks use would be removed from these small portions, then the property would be transferred to the county road system under the Douglas County Public Works Department. And the purpose of this is the US Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration is currently doing a project out there where they need certain areas of land designated as right of way to be, to finish building this OHV lane that's going to border parallel portions of the county park. So it's not being transferred from county ownership. It's just from parks designation to the county public works department so that this project can continue and it will remain OHV a lane there and part of the recreational system out there at the coast.
Great. So this is, we're literally moving the OHV lane from the water side where you've got to cross from the campgrounds to the road, go down the water side and then cross back to the sand access area. We're moving it to the other side of the road where there will be no need to cross the vehicle traffic for the OHV vehicles to get from the campgrounds to the sand area. So but in doing that, we want to make sure we get the, all the designations right. So that's what we're doing here. Any other questions or comments before I open a public hearing? I'll go ahead and open a public hearing and invite testimony. Anybody online for agenda item number four? Anybody here in the building who'd like to come forward for agenda item number four? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any objection?
Um, the board order would be to remove the parks use designation from these properties, these small portions, and then transfer those portions to the right of way under the public works department. So there's two portions of that board order.
I'm going to approve the board order that undesignates those pieces as parks properties and transfers them to public works right of way.
And I'll second that.
A motion a second. Questions or comments? Would like to comment on, um, this is a really good project. It's been a long time in the making. There's a lot of moving parts. Commissioner Boyce has been bird dogging this for a long time and I'm excited about seeing the improvement, the safety improvement and the the facilities improvement that go along with it. So good job. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda item number five is a human resource item. I'll invite up Michael Kurtz. I'm sorry, Michael Kurtz isn't here. I'll invite up Paul Van Dyke.
Uh, Paul Van Dyke, Human Resources Department filling in for Michael Kurtz, Human Resources Director. Board has before it a two-year collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Municipal Employees Council seventy-five, which represents juvenile department employees. First year of the contract includes a six percent cost of living adjustment. Second year, minimum of two percent or you're not received by general county employees. Contract term is July first, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Human Resources Department recommends adoption of the collective bargaining agreement.
We'd move to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll second.
Motion a second. Questions or comments? So I'm not the liaison of the juvenile department, but this is a really important, for a while, it's a really important service we provide. Uh, and as we talk about sort of the continuum of homeless issues and making sure people have housing, this is a place where at least a portion of the staff help youth from being homeless and that they're, they're part of the foster care program. Uh, and generally they're juveniles that have had difficult placements. Uh, and our program is known to be one of the better ones in the state, if not the best. So our folks do a good job. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you. Uh, agenda item number six is a lease agreement and I believe Commissioner Boyce is going to do this for the land department.
Yeah, this is a lease agreement for the space in the annexed building across the parking lot that we leased to OSU for the, uh, extension office. And this is sort of the end of an agreement where they spent a bunch of money to remodel that building for a lesser lease rate and that situation has now since been resolved and this kicks off just a new normal lease without consideration for that remodel. And it's for a five-year term. I'll move to approve the lease agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion a second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda item number seven. Uh, this is a planning department item and I'll invite up our planning director, Joshua Shackley, for a staff report. This will be a public hearing.
Good morning, commissioners. Joshua Shackley, Douglas County Planning. Before you this morning is the co-adoption of the expansion of the city of Roseburg urban growth boundary to include forty-nine point nine two acres of park property located on the north and east sides of Sunshine Park. Subject property is under city ownership and includes existing improvements, but is primarily undeveloped at this time. The urban growth management agreement between the city and county is proposed to be amended to reflect this change to the, um, urban growth boundary as well. The city of Roseburg staff report and findings and all supplementary materials submitted by the city are entered into the record by reference. The city staff report addresses applicable criteria from the city's municipal code, Oregon revised statute, Oregon administrative rule, and Oregon statewide planning goals. A joint public hearing of the Douglas County and City of Roseburg Planning Commissions were held on December second, twenty twenty-four. The county planning commission voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the proposed UGB expansion and associated land use actions to the county board of commissioners. At the same meeting, the city planning commission also recommended approval of the expansion to Roseburg City Council. On January sixth of this year, city planning commission adopted findings of fact and order. At a subsequent meeting of the Roseburg City Council, a public hearing was held on the expansion and, um, they voted to adopt as their own findings of fact and order adopted by the planning commission. That was at their February tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. On February twenty-fourth, the city council, um, adopted ordinance three six zero eight, which approved the UGB expansion and it was signed by the mayor at that time. And the findings of fact adopted by the city, uh, Roseburg City Council, city staff concludes that the proposal is consistent with all applicable state statutes, rules, statewide planning goals, and both the city and county comprehensive plans and development codes. County planning staff has reviewed the proposal and concurs with this assessment. Um, to date, the Douglas County Planning Department has not received any public comment on the proposal. In conclusion, based on the recommendation of the Douglas County Planning Commission and findings found in the January sixth, twenty twenty-five, City of Roseburg City Planning Commission findings of fact and order adopted by Roseburg City Council, county staff concludes that the legislative amendment meets the applicable criteria for approval. So before you, as a, as a action to take today, staff recommends that the board of commissioners co-adopt the city approval of the city of Roseburg urban growth boundary expansion and approve the following specific actions. Co-adopt the city of Roseburg findings of fact and order, which amends the UGB to include forty-nine point nine two acres of city-owned property adjacent to Sunshine Park, adjacent and part of Sunshine Park. Uh, amends the urban growth management agreement between the county and the city as previously described. And as part of all of this, we will also need to amend the comprehensive plan and zoning maps to reflect the change. That's it for my staff report. I can answer any questions. I know city staff is available to answer any questions here or down the line.
So one quick question, and I think I have this right. I know the agenda cover sheet talks about the city, voted to annex the land to be added. But we're not part of that. We're doing UGB thing here, right? Are we also approving that function for that step?
The annexation?
Yeah.
No, that's not our, not our purview.
Right. That's what I believed, but the agenda cover sheet said that. So it said they did it. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. It's not within our scope.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions, staff?
This is a step that's necessary in order to get to that annexation. Is that right?
Yes.
We don't.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
The city adopted concurrent with the UGB expansion adopted to annex. So if the board approves, it will happen concurrently.
We understand that. Any more questions, staff? Seeing none. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite testimony. I think I want to invite those that are in favor of the proposal first, please.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, thank you for your time. My name's Nikki Messenger. I'm the city manager for Roseburg. I do not have a presentation. I just wanted to let you know that we are here to answer any questions. Sam Huck from Three J is the consultant helped us get through this process and he's available as well. So we're not going to take up a bunch of your time, but are here if there are any questions we can answer for you.
Thank you. Any others that want to testify in favor of the proposal, please come forward at this time. Uh, seeing none, anybody online? I should have asked that. Great. Um, okay, we're going to move to testimony for those that are neutral. Anybody here in the building that are neutral want to testify on this issue? Anybody online? Okay. And then finally, anybody opposed, uh, it's their time to speak. Now, anybody online? Anybody here in the room? All right. It's got that list marked off. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and pleasure the board.
I would move to co-adopt the expansion of the city of Roseburg UGB, but including the following actions. Expansion of the city of Roseburg UGB to include four point nine, forty-nine point nine two acres located on the north and east side of Sunshine Park. Uh, amend the Douglas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Maps to reflect the changes in the Roseburg, to the Roseburg UGB. Also to amend the urban growth management agreement as was talked about between Douglas County and the city of Roseburg to reflect these changes to the Roseburg UGB.
I'll second.
Motion a second. Questions or comments? Alls I would say is it makes a whole lot of sense for the city property to be within the city limits and under their city council and staff's control on what occurs on it. So this makes a lot of sense to me. So any other comments or questions? Got a motion and a second? I'll call for a question. Call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Uh, agenda item number eight is a public works item and I'll invite up our tired but still standing public works director, Scott Adams.
Good morning, commissioners. Scott Adams, Public Works. Uh, the item in front of you today is a memorandum of understanding with travel Southern Oregon, uh, in quotes, TSO. We're in TSO will provide three thousand dollars of TSO strategic partnership funds to Douglas County for the printing of new Douglas County road and recreation maps. Uh, these maps haven't been printed since two thousand seven, approximately seventeen years ago. We'll place these maps at different various locations throughout the county, chambers of commerce, cities, um, some of our recreation areas like Diamond Lake and over at the Salmon Harbor area, as well as hotels and other areas of need.
Does this include our new recreational activity of picking up mud, rocks, and sticks from alongside the road?
Uh, we may have to amend it for that.
Got plenty of that. Anybody wants to do it? Any other questions before we have a motion?
We move to approve the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you. Uh, agenda item number nine is a Salmon Harbor item and get to hear once again from Commissioner Boyce for Jim Zimmer.
So this is a contract with KG Manufacturing. We went through a, uh, an open bid process for dock replacement project in the West Basin. Uh, we're, our hope is to replace one dock a year out there. Remaining docks there that are heavily utilized and KG Manufacturing was the winning bidder in that process and I moved to approve the contract.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Alls I would say is the community over there, um, there's still a significant portion of people that see the value of the Marina and the docks and have um, been very clear about their support for continuing to have, um, docks improved and finding ways to do this is important. So, uh, thank you and Mr. Zimmer for looking for those opportunities. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Press. Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda item number ten, commissioner comments. Commissioner Boyce.
Just thank everyone involved in the response to the flooding. We, uh, it's team. Bunch of them out there doing the work, including private contractors that we have on standby already. So uh, I think we're still in response mode. Like to get to recovery mode at some point, but.
Yeah, I was going to remind people that, you know, it is to be said that we are still in response mode. There are certain areas that have seen a little bit. You know, their, their, their danger's over. There's other folks that are still in danger. We have slides coming down throughout the county. We'll, we have another weather event coming in this weekend, which might likely with the winds to be even worse. So um, you know, there would be a recovery and we'll have to have some decisions made, but right now we are concentrating on response mode. Um, to that end, we're going to have, um, um, our public works director, Scott Adams, and, um, our city manager, Emily Ring, on, um, inside Douglas County this, at twelve thirty today, discuss kind of a little bit about what's going on and some of the steps in the future. It's only half an hour, so that's not going to be much. And then finally, I'd just like to say, you know, uh, I'd like to say a shout out to my, uh, uh, granddaughters, uh, Lacey and Emmy that are down with us for the spring break this weekend and are likely watching this. And I'm sorry I didn't get to, haven't got to spend more time with you, but we'll make it up another time.
Well, thank you. And, um, and to my fellow commissioners, when, when these events happen, you know, it's all hands on deck and even though you had your grandchildren here, you left that and came and helped us, Commissioner Boyce. Uh, there was a point you were contemplating getting your boat in the river to do rescues and, and, I mean, everybody shows up and, and participates. I had a chance to talk to Nikki from the city of Roseburg and convey to her what an amazing job her and her team did. Like many of our cities, Roseburg was hit pretty hard. Uh, and, um, from the early morning phone call Sunday morning and to staff and the people that showed up, the interaction with our team, everything was professional. It was timely and it was spot on. People made really good decisions, um, you know, to save lives first and then figure out, you know, what to do, uh, to clean things up. So great, great job, um, for those other city managers and administrators and police chiefs and public works directors that we've interacted with in the last few days. You're all doing a great job too. It's literally when these events happen, it overwhelms all of us. And it's easy just to say, well, you know, if you're a small city or even a city like Roseburg, say, well, the county will take care of it. And it's easy for us to say the state will take care of it. But the fact is, you know, we look up chain and there's no capacity there either. So we all have to do what we can do and uh, from what I can tell, everybody's doing the very best they can. Um, Sheriff, you and your, your folks, I can't tell you the number of deputies I saw out in the water helping push cars out of the way and, and, you know, that first morning, Sunday morning throughout the day. Uh, you and Brad being, you know, at the command center to, you know, help tell the public of the dangers. Brad does such a great job with his Facebook Live and has such an incredible following. I think it has a lot to do with how good his hair is, but, uh, he does a really good job for us and it's nice to have all those uh, pieces in place. I feel like we're getting better and better at emergencies with, with all the ones we have to deal with, but I'm appreciative of everybody's work. So, um, shifting gears, today the commissioners are all participating with the VA, um, the Veterans Administration from our Veterans Hospital, uh, to do a thank you and a coin presentation to our Vietnam veterans out at the fairgrounds. Uh, the sheriff and the commissioners were invited to be, uh, part of the folks that hand out those, uh, those important, uh, thank yous to those veterans and those coins. We'll be reading our proclamation that we normally do at our meeting here. We'll be doing that out there, um, thanking those veterans. That, that's why not one of, when, none of the three of us had a chance to be on the radio today, but uh, we think that's also important. Like I said at the beginning of the meeting, um, the rest of the work goes on and uh, honoring our veterans and thanking them is really at the top of our list. So we're going to make sure we do that today. And then finally, um, while that's going on here in the county, we've had some really interesting developments at the federal level, including, uh, I've had a phone conversation, a Zoom meeting with, uh, might have been a Teams meeting. I'm sorry, I'm getting all the platforms mixed up. Uh, with the acting director of the BLM, National BLM, uh, just, just a short time ago. Losing track of my days, maybe a week ago. And we've now scheduled, uh, another one out of that meeting uh, with the nominated, likely to be the full-time permanent director of the National BLM. Around talking about how O N C lands are managed here in Douglas County and in the other seventeen, uh, counties in Oregon that have these very unique lands. So, uh, exciting times on the, the federal work that we've been doing. Uh, we're going to stay focused on that and make sure we're prepared and making a point. We have a great story to tell and it feels like we have somebody that wants to hear that story. So we're excited about that. So we're going to keep up that work. Uh, we are going to reconvene, but I'm going to, um, adjourn this meeting, allow Nikki and her staff to get back to work and we'll reconvene in just a minute. Meeting adjourned. I'm going to go ahead and reconvene as the Douglas County Four H Master Gardener and Extension Service District, one of the longest titles we have for any of the groups we convene as. Uh, I will invite up as our first agenda item, um, Laura Quarter to present item number one.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, Laura Quarter, Budget Officer with OSU Douglas County Extension. Uh, this meeting notice was published in the news review on March tenth. Uh, you have a supplemental budget order for your consideration and approval to adjust resources.
Excuse me one minute.
Yes.
Hey, Mark. We reconvene, yeah, thank you.
Do I start over?
No, you're okay. I just.
Good, because I'm on a roll here. Yeah.
You're doing great.
Any mistakes? Um, to adjust resources and appropriations due to the new five-year lease agreement. due to the new five-year lease agreement effective January 1st, 2025.
Motion, please.
Yeah. Move to approve the budget adjustment.
I'll second.
I have a motion a second, questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Press?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda item number two.
Great. So we have one position that we need to appoint to keep the Extension District Budget Committee aligned with the county. Jeff Johnson has agreed to renew his term expiring June 30th, 2027. And then you have an order before you to make that appointment.
I move to approve the reappointment.
And I'll second that.
I didn't know we had to ask them. We just do it. You said you agreed to do it.
You do. I think there's some kind of compensation associated with yours.
Thank you for asking them. Jeff does a fantastic job for us.
He is.
We got a motion a second, questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Press?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Laura, before you step down, I want to thank you. I'm not sure that you've completely committed, but I know you were asked to help from the Extension Service with some animal loss and things that we're dealing with with this flood.
Yes, yes. Yep, that was Emily.
Your willingness to at least entertain that conversation, we appreciate. So thank you.
Yep, you bet. Okay, thank you. See you guys in a month.
Anything else from the board? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.